All right, so we're all here. We'll call the meeting to order for July 8th. This is our first select board meeting in person in quite a long time, so it's a little bit different. We'll be used to it again maybe. First order out of business is the consent agenda. We have no minutes, but we do have warrants. AP 2049, AP 2049 S, AP 2050, AP 2050 S, AP 2051, AP 2051 S, WP 2052, WP 2052 S, WP 2052 R, AP 2101, AP 2102, PR 2026, PR 2027, and PR 2101. We have a Community Preservation Act committee appointment of members for a three-year term, DPW Water Tank Fencing Award, Reject the Bid and Rebid the Project, and then also Hadley Housing and Economic Development Committee and the Climate Change Committee appointments.
I can second, but I just wanted to pull out the Climate Change Committee because I just wanted to correct some of the members on it.
Okay, so we'll pull out Climate Change and everything else. Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention the CPA. Do you want to...
All right, we'll pull that out as well then. So, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Shut the door, please.
Christian, did you go?
Oh yeah, so, sorry. So the Climate Change, the members are as follows. Jack Psychowski is the chair, Michael Doctor, Jamie Ernststrom, Stephen Ernststrom, and Kathleen Nelson, right now.
Can you motion approve those?
Still a little second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, CPA? We have... Some of it opens. For a three-year term, we have letters of interest from Cassandra Gonzalez, Edwin Matusko, and Mary Thayer.
Who are they replacing?
Mary was on there, I believe. Edwin was on there. And Cassandra is, looks like, replacing Andy Morse Freeman.
So I think that, I, 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 it just might, yes, I just threw that out. Andy doesn't, maybe he didn't send in a letter. I don't think he knows that he was supposed to. He's still assuming he is the chair. He doesn't know that there was something there. I just asked him if he knew about the new person, and he says, "Oh, no, I don't." And he thinks he's, he thinks he's there, and he thinks he's on it. So I just wanted to do that.
Maybe we should clarify.
Maybe we should post on it till I'm next to me.
Is there a note, is there a vote for another member?
No, those are the three. Those are the only letters of interest we got, so it's, what we've done in the past is based off letters of interest.
And I should always be the sixth, which may offer them a slight excuse.
When were these, but when were these due? I mean, you got it.
When were they, June?
Well, they were two, they were two people who always just submitted letters. I used Mary's letter to just fill a position. Cassandra submitted, and Edwin submitted a letter, and, I mean, we didn't foolish letters of interest again.
Okay.
So...
I think Edwin sent one to each one of us. I don't remember what the other letter was.
Edwin did. And in the past, people have, for sort of the bigger families, they have said they're interested again. Cassandra Gonzalez sent an email, she asked him about it, and she sent the letter in, and I put it on it. Andy Copackey, he, we talked to a few of them on the committee, wanted to stay on the committee, but because he was no longer on our board, he had to come off. He wanted again, but there was no room, and Andy Morse Freeman told him there was no room for him. So he would have submitted something, but he isn't believed that there's no room, so maybe it's something that he wanted to put out there and then decide. But I know there's plenty of interest in it. But that's why he would have submitted one too.
A committee with people being interested is very exciting.
Imagine that.
You know, how long do you, I'll catch you, I'm thinking, lined on that committee?
Is there EMS in there? There's front page, three-year-old, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I like the interest, but at the same time, interest only after it's been posted of who else is interested is also an issue, so...
I can just make a motion not to delay this, this decision.
Any further discussion?
Well, we've kind of always known when you're re-upped that you needed to re-submit a letter of intent.
Right.
I mean, that's been the process right along for any committee that you've been on. It's nothing new. It's always been done in the past, so I don't know how. We're at a new fiscal year, July 1st, before we reappoint our committees and everything like that. I'm glad to see there are other people certainly of interest. It's really nice. Fresh new faces, they're not always bad.
I'm gonna laugh for all the committees.
Well, you know, and it's not often that we get as many people of interest that want to join a committee, so I'm kind of excited about having some, some of the faces. Not that I don't appreciate all the help that Andy has done in the past, but, you know, that would be my take on it. I don't want to spite anybody.
So all, I'm sorry, any further discussion on that? All those in favor of delaying the appointment?
Aye.
And close?
No.
And then...
Take these three and work it out.
So then could I get a motion to that effect?
Motion accepted through. End of the, except submitted letters for...
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll say no.
Jane, were you a yes?
I was, uh...
I'd, okay. 401 carries. Okay, and we, let's do a quick one before our 5:45 appointment. Cell phone agreement for the building inspector. Tom would like to use his own cellphone rather than the town provide him a cellphone and pay for a plan. So he is asking for a $50 a month stipend in exchange, instead of taking the town phone. So...
I kind of have a problem with somebody using their own cellphone for public service. I don't think that, I think we just... It's the open end, so...
What were you saying?
I'm, I'm...
What I was, I'm bringing on anyways.
Cell phone.
Cell phone. I think we ran into a little bit of difficulty with somebody on the board of health that has a town cellphone and used it for personal use without our knowledge. And when we needed to track that cellphone, all of his personal data was on it. So I think, like, I would prefer that they have separate cellphones. I think that's the proper thing to do. What do you do?
I have one that's probably the one that I need to...
You vote, and how do we work it with you?
It's all public records. It's only one set, and they have, I just don't use them in a proper way.
Okay. Why not? I mean, and that's the issue. If people are using it privately, what they have on there? Mike, your phone? Public?
This is my personal phone.
You have two phones?
Yeah, I have one.
You only have one? Okay.
So can I ask you a question? What do you do when you go on vacation? If somebody calls that phone, do you forward it to anybody at...
Uh, no, I, I work, I'm always on duty here, so I answer as much as I can, and if I can't, I'll call, mention, ask them to return a phone call or something like that. Can't count for the number of emails, texts, and phone calls that I've answered when I'm not in the office.
Do you have a policy on this?
Yeah, I do.
You have to take your mask off. Do you even take your mask off? No, you're 16 years old.
I mean, it's been a policy of, you can't initiate a cellphone, and people can use them with discretion. So, no, no misbehaving on this town's cellphone.
I guess your question is, I just use my personal, it's not in my budget for something. Yeah, yeah, I was like, wait, is that one?
So if you're using a town phone for personal issues, you would obviously have to be careful with what you're doing. If you're using a personal phone for town business, and you're getting a stipend, what is the difference? Are all those records still available to the town?
What do you do, John?
I got two separate phones, which I, since way back, and I have a town phone, and I have my personal.
Okay.
Which is a total pain, but I was one of the ones that originally was given a town phone, and I was told that I could use it for personal, and then at one point, I had to itemize the phone calls every year, and either pay half or the phone bill, or finally I decided, just give me another phone, and it'll be all-time business.
Chief?
So I handle cell phones for the department, and one of them was the building inspector's cell. There is, there is an option through Verizon where you can keep your own personal phone, and they have a way of actually separating personal from your business on the phone. That has been offered up by some of our tenants and stuff, so I don't take the opportunity. I think Debbie is looking to, is going to be taking over Tim's old cellphone, because he uses his personal phone right now. So that is an option that we could discuss, but, I'll see.
So maybe we want to table it to clarify if that's something that he wants to do, rather than take a second phone, or...
I like the concept, I mean, I like the concept of him using, you know, getting a stipend. It's one of the logistics of the whole thing.
You know, I'm particularly fine with it. I kind of like the idea that Verizon has in separating the two. I think that would, that would work for me, if there was something that could do that.
And it becomes a, it's basically a separate phone line, so we ask above public records part, so it's separate. It's their phone, it's their phone still, and anything done on that additional, you know, it's basically putting a button on your cellphone to choose for different program.
So then I guess the question is, do we, do we really, should we really be giving a $50 stipend if we're still paying for a separate line of service just on his device?
Well, you can find out what the cost is.
Okay.
It's better than making cheaper, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then you want to wait till next meeting to make that decision, and then, just to clarify?
I'm not real worried about public records. It's the same, same concept of when I was sending my town emails, my private email address, my personal email address, if I'm out of it, or not in the best interest of me to do it that way.
But I like the idea where his, that phone could be divided between the two, separated between...
I think it's still a public records issue, though.
No, no, it's not, John. John, you're 16 years old. If you feel comfortable, you could take your Mam cop if you chose to. You know, chose to.
Just want everybody to see him.
Okay, I just, there is that option.
Okay, so then let's clarify as far as the cost and public records and all that, and then we'll revisit this next meeting. So we'll table that for now. All right, so we have 5:45 appointment for the town administrator position. We did our second round of interviews today. We narrowed the field down to two remaining candidates. We could not narrow it down to one. There was quite a bit of discussion and disagreement over who's the best fit. So we've gotten it down to two. We've asked them to come back and come before the full board this evening. So Buzz is out there with both candidates. We flipped a coin to see who would go first, and Mr. Guarino is going to be the first one to come in from the board. And so we'll have a chance to ask any questions that we want to ask the candidate. Could be something they've talked about in the past during interviews, something new, doesn't matter, nothing's off the table as far as...
Is he getting to make a statement first before we ask them?
Uh, yeah, we could probably do that. Just a minute or two, just as they have, since he hasn't, you know, put it. Yeah, so Buzz, are you ready?
Yes.
What, if you could bring Tom in first?
Tom Guarino, you folks spoke with Tom, Tom, you said, right there, earlier today in the screening committee meeting.
All right, and so Joyce was, I don't think you've met Joyce yet, but if you can just give us a quick minute or two summary of who you are, just so that the viewers at home can...
Sure, and thanks again for having me back this evening. Couple of good things happened with that. I had to change my tie because I stopped for ice cream on the way home the first time. Never a good thing. And my wife caught me having ice cream, so that's never a good thing. Also, I'm a Franklin County native. I was born and brought up in Greenfield. Did a lot of work here in the valley as a circuit rider a long time ago in some of the hill towns, western hill towns of Franklin County. I was in Northfield and over in Warhol, to the east. I went to Vermont for what I thought was going to be a year. Ended up meeting my spouse-to-be, and we're still in Vernon, Vermont. I was an economic development director and a town manager in that state, and then came and ran the Mass Rural Development Council for 10 years, as long as the funding stayed with it. When the funding ran out, we were based out of Mass Amherst, and I had an office in Boston with EO HCD, and then one on the Cape as well. I went to work in Bourne on a 90-day interim town administrator hitch that lasted 14 and a half years. 13 of those years were really good. The last 18 months or so were difficult. The board and I agreed to separate in the most amicable way. I still am in contact with the board. I still give them at least a member or two advice on their call. Been most recently working in the little town that I live in, up in Vernon, helping them recruit for a town administrator. Not a position that I was applying for, but I'm helping them recruit, and then helping them through this COVID CARES Act-type issues as well as keeping the from-town meeting forward, keeping things on the rail. And I've been working in the town of Wareham as a consultant on their multiple contracts under wastewater treatment facility. I'm working with the town administrator there.
So let's open it up to any questions you may have. Christian, I know you had some questions for, for watching earlier today.
Yeah, I was just going to start with, Peter, what attracts you to Hadley?
There's a number of different things that attract me to Hadley. One, it's close to home. Two, it's been a well-managed community for the last 15 to 20 years. There's been a good balance of growth in agriculture here. I know the area. As I said, I think there's a lot of interesting things for me to do, and that I can bring my toolbox to Hadley with. That balance of ag and growth, traffic issues, working with the wastewater and the DPW and your enterprise ones, looking at some innovative ways to do some new things. One of the things that I've been most fortunate about in my tenure in Bourne was to be able to hire, because we had this retirement tsunami that came on us about five or six years ago. I was able to bring in some really, really sharp, young talent into department leadership roles. Some promoted from within, and some came from the outside. And we did, we were able to do some new things that kind of weren't able to do with some of the old guard, if you will. A lot of moving into computerized software age on our inspection services, on our MS4, tracking, much more work with GIS than we had done in the past. I was able, and I, I'm probably the senior member of a newer municipal group like ICMA, but it's on a much smaller scale, called ELGIA, engaging local government leaders. And they're primarily younger folk. But it certainly keeps me fresh on what's going on, on citizen engagement, how we better do that as opposed to just posting on the website our agendas and getting people involved on, from the community on electronic platforms, and that seems to be really helpful. Hadley just has a lot of things to offer. Not to drone on, on these things, but it has a good mix. It has a, it has a historic component. It has commitment. If you look at the infrastructure, I mean, your buildings, you've committed yourself to expending on new facilities. Your library, I can't, I can't wait for that to open. And you would, it seems to me, based on reading your town website and then looking at GazetteNet and those things you have online, that you are willing to try new things while having respect for the history of the community. This is a really good opportunity for me, and one of the other things, I'm going to be honest, it's close to home. I'll be able to sleep in my own bed, which is something I haven't been able to do for a long time, too.
That was actually the question I was going to ask, why you wanted to come to Hadley?
Did you have a book?
Yeah, I could ask more.
Yes, you don't.
I can take you on all that. You know, I think COVID-19 is a, it's a different opportunity, right? It's got a lot of negative impacts, but I think it also allows us to reinvent ourselves a little bit as a town as we try to come back to normal. You know, certain businesses will be gone, new businesses will come. And how could you envision, you know, facilitating kind of a redefining of our community as, as town administrator?
So one of, one of the mantras I've used over the years that I learned is change is opportunity. Change brings the ability to think newly, try to shake off some things that, because we've always done them that way. And to look at, if you lose restaurants, or if you lose some retail establishments that aren't able to survive the long-term shutdown, what does the town offer from an economic development standpoint? Are there microloans that you can help new startups with? I know a community that's gone on a regional basis to EO HCD for some, for a, for a grant. You just do, simply do that, offer some micro, micro lending, be it deferred loans or straight-out grants. Is there a way you can re-envision your zoning that provides for, I don't want to say greater density on Route 9, it's pretty dense, but maybe off of, off of Route 9 into some of the other areas? Can you change your height requirements? Is that something you want to do? What do you, can you do on second-floor businesses that may be in a, may be in a home? Or can you allow for accessory businesses in some areas where you perhaps haven't before? Is there a need to rebrand what Hadley is? I don't know, but that's certainly something that you would engage the citizenry with as well as your state and local leaders. You know, what do we want to be in 15 years type of thing? Do you set a new strategic agenda for that? And who do you bring into play for that, for those facilitated-type meetings? I, I think there's always opportunity to look to new things, providing if you're willing to bring everyone in the, in the community, all different parts of the community into the conversation.
I just have one more, if I could. It's, you know, diversity is also something I think we, is a challenge or offset in this community, and trying to engage, you know, a broad spectrum of citizens into town government and those kind of things. Do you have experience with any kind of diversity initiatives, or creating diverse, more diverse workplaces, civic environment, et cetera?
Bourne wasn't one of your more ethnically diverse communities. We certainly had a more ethnically diverse communities to the south of us in New Bedford and Fall River, and in that area. And we, when we hired, from a hiring practice, we were certainly advertised in those local newspapers as well as online and all the other things that you need to do. We did have a fairly substantial community within Bourne, as well as some issues with, I don't want to say issues like it's a bad thing, but some issues with the Wampanoag native nation. We worked on, there are some things with Aboriginal fishing rights and some things that we had, and we sometimes ran into some difficulties with it we had to address. But to bring in a more diverse community, you need to be able to offer, within your town hall, the ability for translation if it's necessary, and that, that may be something. Bilingual, if you will, advertisers, working with some of the social and ecological groups in the town, within the area, not just in the town, to be able to recruit. And there, there are those groups out there that are willing to put that kind of assistance in for you. And then once, if you do diversify your workforce, how do you celebrate that diversity? How do you be sure that there's fairness throughout the organization? And how do you, the other thing is, how are you sure that perhaps you don't offer professional development in, in a bilingual way? As an example, maybe that's one of the things you have to start to look at.
All right, thank you. John?
My biggest question was, in Bourne, how did you handle grants and short-term loans and things like that? And how would you recommend applying for that type of money, from the state or from the federal?
So Bourne was large enough, if we obtained a grant, and I'll talk about some grant funding opportunities that we took advantage of. We were able to run the cash flow. We had a sufficient cash flow where we were able to do that if we needed to front the money and then get it back. Generally, we didn't have to do short-term borrowing for that. If that was something we needed to do here, I would certainly work with the treasurer to be sure that whatever short-term, if you will, the borrowing that we did, where our rates were, what the premium payback would be on that, if it was a short, if you will, a short-term bond anticipation of, if you were going to go for the long-term thing on, on infrastructure. We were very successful in a number of areas, both large and small, in grant funding. We most recently had received a $2.3 million Economic Development Administration grant that we were able to match with a $1.5 million Mass Works grant on a wastewater treatment facility. And the town also put up its own tax money, not just enterprise fund money, to help match that and get that program running. We were very successful with some things that you wouldn't have down here, the Economic Seaport Council. We had some grants here for putting in boat ramps, which, again, does, may not sound like a big deal here, but it's a $700,000 ramp that we ended up having for handicap accessibility and all those types of things. We're very successful with EO HCD on housing and code, you know, bringing housing up to code for seniors and for those of low and moderate income. We worked with historic, historic grants, EO HCD, historic tax credits to convert a school. It was a private venture, but there was some grant money available, and some tax credits available to convert the former high school into affordable 55-plus housing. It took the old high school and then it added another 30 units to that. We were very successful in a number of mass works, branch to do our main street over. We really envisioned a new main street and a new downtown, because it was a pretty dead downtown. It took a long time. Um, it took a long time, um, working with a number of different groups, but we ended up with several mass work grants on that. Um, part of the outcome with that, we also had an enterprise zone, uh, like a, like a opportunity zone, but it was through the county, uh, the strong county government in Barnstable County. Uh, the Regional Planning Commission had regulatory authority over the municipalities on some, some building projects. So, we got a growth incentive zone, uh, where we re-envisioned our, our zoning down there. And the, the outcome over a 10-year period, uh, was a brand-new park with a splash pad where we never had a town green before, a brand-new hotel on the canal, which had never been done before, uh, 200 units of market-rate housing, uh, apartments, one and two, mostly one and two bedroom, an assisted living facility downtown, and I don't know if I said this in, before, three or four restaurants. So, things are really turning there, uh, but it took a lot of work. And I think I can, and those types of experiences in grant work, too. I, I didn't depend on the department, we just do, go after some of the grant funding themselves. Uh, I wasn't the grants person, um, but I certainly reviewed and signed up on most.
Joyce, you have any questions?
Um, what is your thoughts on what your longevity would be here at Hadley?
You're looking at my hair.
Hey, if I didn't dye mine, you wouldn't know the difference.
So, without getting into too, too much of my personal life, um, we had to make some decisions a number of years ago, um, relative to some issues with my, with my, my sons. And by my wife, uh, who is a much smarter and harder-working person than I, make sure that it's in the public sphere, uh, and it's true, uh, but she stayed, she just stayed home. And we knew when we took this challenge on with, with some things at home, that I would work longer than a lot of people would work. So, I have, in my head, my health is good, uh, notwithstanding the COVID-20, um, my, my health is good and I expect to be on the job another seven to 10 years. Um, you know, one of the things that, I, I'm going to kind of divert for a minute, if I could, please. Uh, I talked a little earlier today about, um, a program that we started in Moore called Priority-Based Budgeting. We never completed it. Things changed, finances changed, but it's probably the most intriguing and best budgeting tool that I have seen in the number of years that I've been doing this type of work. It really pins the departments down into looking at everything they do by program, breaking things down into program, breaking things down into what's required by law, what's something the town's priority, what's nice to have, what may be able to be done with a partnership with the private sector, or simply, I don't want to say turfed off, but transitioned over to private sector. Um, those are new things that are coming along, like, it's been around for four or five years now, are you? And I look to be able to take those kind of innovative-type things. The other one that I really hope to be able to use here, um, in citizen engagement is pro, it's a software program. You have to buy it. It's an app. Uh, Davey probably knows it, Bang the Table, you know? That's a pretty good one, as they go. Um, and those are types of things that I think you might be able to utilize here as well. So, I may be a little brave in the gills. I do try to stay up to date on the things that are happening. And I think I could offer the town not only some institutional knowledge, uh, but some innovation as well as we move forward.
Your financial background, um, our town is, in going to MMA conferences, we were one of mainly only ones that have, uh, did anything with our OPEP. And what did Barnstable do with?
Well, I don't know what Barnstable did, but what Moore did. We did better than Moore, Barnstable.
Okay.
Um, we sat down and created a very thorough OPEP policy. Uh, we created the OPEP trust, we have the trustees, and started to put a fixed amount of cash in on an annualized basis, plus a percentage, one-half of 1% of the general fund operating budget, plus a percentage of the, we had a landfill in Moore, um, that was a very large enterprise fund that was very, it's very successful, it runs clean, it's, it's a, um, and if we received additional money in excess of X, um, some of that went into a capital stabilization account, and some of that went into the OPEP account. The other thing that we did is we looked at the enterprise fund specifically, and we started to carve out, if you will, uh, an amount of money for OPEP, uh, specifically that the enterprise fund would, the enterprise fund would fund it. So, we had about a million six in there, I believe, the last I looked. Uh, but it was a very thorough, uh, piece. I, I meant to say earlier, I met my good best friend today, the chair of the finance committee. Um, and I was fortunate in Moore, I was telling Buzz earlier, during my tenure there, I had three exceptionally good finance committee chairpeople. Um, and this lab, the one who currently serves is, is absolutely a genius, and, uh, we were able to put together a whole new set of financial policies in the town, including the OPEP.
And what did you do with your hotel or meal tax?
We didn't receive a lot of that, um, uh, you'd think so being the Cape, but we didn't have a lot of hotel and rooms and meals. Uh, we did institute, um, the 2%, first on the meals, uh, we went back. We were one of the last towns on the Cape to institute that. Um, we utilized that as part of our general, um, incoming revenue on an annualized basis. We, it was above 400, uh, 350 or 400,000. Um, that is going up because the new hotel is now built, um, the new restaurants are in, and we were more interested in the Airbnb, uh, tax, if you will, for the, for the more than two weeks or less than two weeks, and working with the secondary home market.
Didn't the Cape just recently initiate a, a tax on people renting their places?
That's the, that's the, we call it the Airbnb, type of short-term, short-term rental. And part of that short-term rental, um, tax, and I don't want to get into too many weeds here, part of that is going to help fund the environmental initiatives relative to water and wastewater and abadings down there.
You have a sewer, or people aren't on?
So, most-
Down sewer, or, or are they on the whole septic system?
Most of the town is on septic. We, in the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s, the town was, when, there was still a lot of money coming around in the 80s for, for water and wastewater. We, the village of Buzzards Bay, part of the village of Buzzards Bay, pretty much rotary to rotary, if you're going down Main Street, um, that's our sewer district, um, was in an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Wareham. We shipped, uh, a couple of hundred thousand gallons a day to Wareham. Most recently, uh, I spoke earlier about the $2.3 million grant from EDA and the $1.5 million grant. We are in the process, or they are in the process, excuse me, of constructing a small 100,000-gallon per-day, uh, treatment facility right next to the new police station, um, that will take care of all of the Main Street needs that we projected, uh, for the next 25 to 30 years.
Any thought on the public safety? We haven't touched on that yet, so we have, our departments have now gotten to the point where we're feeling good about where they are. We're not certainly done yet with, uh, what we would like to do for police and fire.
Do you mean from a staffing perspective, or from a training perspective, or?
Staffing, training, um, our police, we're going to, you know, still continue on the pathway that we've done. Chief Mason has done a great job. Chief Spankable has, uh, increased our, um, daytime coverage, you know, we're, our fire department at nighttime, so that end of it hasn't actually been touched yet, because that's something that we still would like to work on. And ambulance, we're still in the throes of that right now.
You contract ambulances, is that correct? Um, so in Moore, we have three, we had three stations, and they were full-time stations. Um, and the south side of the canal was getting much busier. We went forward on the fire and we ran our own advanced life support, um, ambulance service within the town.
When was that started recently?
Oh-
A long time ago.
Long time ago. It's been, it was a BLS for a long time and went to paramedic service a long time ago. So, it's, it was an ALS for a number of years and-
Were you involved with that process?
No, it was before-
Before you got there?
Before I got there. But what we did do, we saw a need for increased, um, fire, we, we wrote a grant, um, a safer grant, which was able to put a number, at least one per shift, one per tour, on, uh, to beef, beef the ranks up by, it was by eight, and we ended up keeping four of those eight, so it added one per, one per, per shift, if you will, if we reinforce shifts. Um, we, years ago, while I was there, we were having awful time with our police department, not an awful time, but keeping police. We were always down six or seven or eight, eight officers, uh, either through, you know, all of the things that people are awful, injured on duty, FNLA, vacation, training, um, you know, from the time we trained to the time, time we hired to the time we put somebody on the street was 15 or 16 months. Uh, we went in and received a, a small targeted override to add police officers, uh, to bring the, the ranks up to about 48 to 50 full-time officers, not including dispatch. Uh, we ran our own dispatch and we didn't have a regional dispatch. Uh, we wanted to keep the, what they call the PSAP money. We wanted to keep that money in-house, so we did our dispatch locally. The fire was dispatched out of the Sheriff's Department. Um, the fire probably still needs another four, um, as, as things get busier there, but I certainly have worked with beefing up, uh, the, both the police and fire department during my tenure.
So, um, salary, you, you're familiar with what was advertised on the position, and I just want to make sure that that's, you know, Hadley's by no means the highest-paying town in the city.
Well, I, I am aware of the range that was advertised. I, I don't think, I'm going to be Tom here for a minute. I'm not sure I want to discuss, you know, negotiate salary if I'm selected here in, in, in the public realm.
Okay. All right. Free cash, how do you see free cash? How should it be used?
Depending on how you are currently structured, um, you should try never to use free cash for operating budgets, if you can do that. In Moore, we always used about a million dollars for operating budget. We just, we would need to do that $2 million flip to be able to have that happen. But we had, we have, we did reduce the amount annually, uh, of what we were trying to do with free cash. Um, free cash should be, you know, they, they, they say a minimum of five. I like to see it at 8%, if you can get it up to that amount. Um, when I first came to Moore, uh, and I discussed this in one of the other interviews, um, we were self-insured, health insurance-wise, we, we were a million and a half upside down, and we ended up, we were spending about $8 million on health insurance. We did a lot of things to fix that, but our free cash was less than 3% of the general fund operating budget. Um, over the years and through good fiscal policy and good stewardship, both by the select board, uh, myself, the finance committee, and the departments, uh, the departments were key, um, in reworking budgets. So, we always had a hundred dollars here, you know, that's, you know, that's spending a hundred dollars here, let's see if we can work that around. By the time I left, uh, between free cash and stabilization, free cash was at eight and a half million dollars on a, without, without the enterprise fund, about 66 million, 68 million dollar general fund operating budget. Stabilization was in about the five and a half to six million dollar range. Capital stabilization was pushing a couple of million dollars. So, we really turned it around. Um, and during this COVID, um, problem that we're all dealing with, they are fortunate to have that kind of cash reserve to keep things on the rails.
Any others?
On that point, uh, if the taxpayers decide not to fund because of COVID, because of how much the taxes raise, are you able, willing, and ready to level fund for a year or two?
Sure. I am ready to level spend, um, level funding, yes, but not department by department. The police department may, they may be the bottom line of levelness, but you may have to put some dollars into police and fire, uh, or one department may be in need, so everyone isn't, it's not, um, leveled to every department. There may be adjustments in there, but level bottom line, certainly, we can, we can look to do that per department.
Questions, Jane, anything?
I'm all set.
Okay. Um, all right, well, that's it. Do you want to hang out for a little bit? And, um, I don't want to hang out.
See, what I'm going to be able to do now is I'm going to go into Amherst-
Yeah.
And I'm going to get pizza, and it's one of those other things that no one's ever going to know about. I'm going to take my tie off.
You're in trouble for the ice cream, you might as well.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Do you support our meal tax and do it manually? We have really good people like you.
Can I get it by the slice?
Yes.
All right, as long as I can get a slice, then I will do that. When I was little, now, this is, you'll probably remember in some of, there used to be a restaurant here called the Aqua Vida. And my dad used to work, he used to take vacation time and work the Northampton Fair when they ran the horses. And it was always a big deal, when I was about this high, to go to the Aqua Vida with my father.
Yep.
So, did you choose the hillside across the way or primo down?
Well, you tell me which one's better.
Depends on what you want.
Ah, very well done. Thank you all very much.
Thanks to you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right. Buzz, we're ready for Carolyn.
All right.
So, the other candidate is Carolyn Brennan, and I'll let Buzz come in and introduce her. In the meantime, though, I'll say thank you to Dr. McKenzie, Paul McCretsky, Chief Spankable, and Chief Mason for their help on the hiring campaign.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, folks. The screening committee met Carolyn a couple of weeks ago and earlier today. Carolyn Brennan.
So, welcome.
Hi.
If you could, uh, just a minute or two, kind of introduce yourself to the viewers at home and to those of us that haven't mentioned.
Okay. So, my name's Carolyn. I have been in municipal government for about 30 years, focusing as a council on aging director. I started, actually, I started employment, um, actually, I'm shaving on Reston down the street. Well, I went to UMass and my major was gerontology. And so, um, I actually did my internship at the Amherst Council on Aging, and that's probably where I first found my love of municipal government. And then, um, when the Hampton Council on Aging position opened- And then when the Hampden Council on Aging position opened up, I began working there and started from the basement of a town hall, which is typically very common where councils on aging started many years ago. And finished a building project about 10 years after I was there and built a brand new senior center. It was a very small town, very similar to Hadley. I loved it. And we did not have a town administrator. And so by default, I became the procurement officer into procurement with Pioneer Valley. And built a really beautiful, just like this, a wonderful senior center. And then moved on to, I actually have to say I took a brief, very brief break. I thought I had been in municipal government for a while. I felt that, let me try private, the private sector. And my twin sister at 40 was having her first child. And I thought, I'll help her and then I'll, I'll try the private sector and went into the private sector. And when I tell you a week later, I knew I had made the biggest mistake. It was not for me, the bottom line was not what I was, that was not what I was driven to, to produce. And so three years later, another council on aging position became available in Islam Meadow. And that's where I have been working since 2007 now. And I have loved it. I continue my love for municipal government, but about eight years ago, I realized that I wanted to do something more. I had worked for different forms of government, Board of Selectment, Open Town Meeting. Islam Meadow, I had recently switched to a charter with seven council members. And realized right away that that, I miss Open Town Meeting. I love it. And I know it's crazy and some of you have heard this throughout the interview process. I love Open Town Meeting. I like that people have the right to civic engagement, that they can stand up and say what they want. I also spoke about, you know, those citizens that can be against the cave people, citizens against virtually everything, but there's usually a reason for it. And it's always good to know why and what the, what those issues are. And I gave examples of when we were trying to put the senior center in Hampden, the resistance we got. And it was, it's an individual who had stood up at town meeting and really expressed strongly over and over again why we didn't need a senior center. And instead of just putting him in that box, I had a great mentor who was my building committee chair. And he said, no, we're going to call him. We're going to find out what the issues were. Now, we did, we called him. He couldn't believe we called him. And that was really, really wonderful to get that, that dialogue. I don't know if we got his vote for the senior center, but I learned a lot about reasons why people don't feel like they're being listened to. But I still believe the Open Town Meeting is the best. So about five years ago, when I realized that I needed to further my education, I went back for my MBA while I was continuing to work, received that. Just when my husband thought that, great, the stress level is over with. I have a wonderful connection with the Mass Municipal Association, James Baker. And Denise and I had gotten to know each other because I was always calling her saying, okay, so what group can I go to? Can I go to the small town administrator's group? Can I crash that? And she realized that I was really wanting to learn about, to be a town administrator. And she told me about the Suffolk program for that Mass Municipal Association does with Suffolk administration in, public administration, I'm sorry, public administration. It's a certificate program for department heads who want to move on to a management position. And it's a year long. It was in Andover, so I drove every Friday to Andover and just loved it. I mean, that is really, really when I started to call myself, and I shared this with you guys in the municipal junkie, that first, our first class was learning how to identify towns. And that this professor, it was just fascinating, explained how to identify certain towns. He had five categories. If you could identify that town, if your management style best fit, that would be a really, really good fit. And so there was five of them. And I don't remember all of them, but they were grouped into categories where maybe Long Meadow and Islam Meadow would fit into one category based on the dynamics, the physical characteristics, and what maybe the industry was. And the one that I found that I loved, which is why I loved Hampden, was the yeoman community. And that's, yeoman community is characterized by typically an agricultural community, rural, wants to maintain that rural integrity and struggles with wanting to bring in economic development. But there were key players in that community and learning about the patriarch and the matriarch. That's not always about the leadership in town. It's the, it's that quiet leadership in the background, that people that who've grown up there all are lies. That's who you want to get to know. It's exactly what happened to me in Hampden and I feel like that is where my love continued. And so Hadley, as I've been looking at positions in town administration, I've been very careful. We've had positions that have opened up right near me, but I knew it was not going to be a good fit. In fact, in Islam Meadow, that position was open. But I just, I did not want to work in a council dynamic with no Open Town Meeting. So when I, when I was contacted about this position and whether I was interested in applying, and I realized that, yeah, I remember Hadley. You know, that was, I lived, I worked in Hadley. I used PPTA. I know that community and it's that, I'd be interested in that. And so that's, you know, that's where that journey began, applying for this. At the same time, so I have been in association, I've been on the finance committee for about five years and has chaired it for the last three or four years. And because of that, I was on the Association of Town Finance Committees. And still, I'm still on the Association of Town Finance Committee, but I'm not on the finance committee any longer because at that same time, the timing was a little weird, I was urged to run for selectmen. So I did, I now, a month into being a selectman for Wolverham. And I have learned so much just in four meetings about the role and the interaction between the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. And just the different dynamics, you know, of what happens and the executive session and all of that. So they, I can see how much they are complementing each other. And right away, I did check with the Ethics Commission to see if that would be a problem. And there's none, there's many, there's several, either town managers or town administrators or department heads in the, in the Commonwealth, excuse me, who are also in an elected position. So I guess I kind of covered where my love is. I will, I know I will always be in municipal government one way or the other. But I am, based on my type of management style and how much I love to build relationships, Hadley does fit that yeoman characteristic that I, that has brought me to this point. So I'm excited to be here and it's been a wonderful process. And it's nice to see you all. I got used to your houses, your rooms when I was watching some of your meetings. So it's nice to see you all in one setting. Zoom's great, Zoom's great, but it is so much nicer to be able to see all of that face to face.
I don't know, I was giving you some of my comfortable chairs.
Yeah, she did have a comfortable chair, yes. And somebody else, yeah, wasn't someone here?
They didn't.
Okay, that one across, I think the desk, yes, yeah.
Christian, do you have any questions or John?
Well, I can, I can ask it again. You kind of answered it, but just kind of reiterated, you know, what attracts you to Hadley. It sounds like the yeoman.
Absolutely.
But is there more to it about the town or anything along those lines?
Um, I, I think it's unique. It's bordered by two very different communities, right in the middle of that. And yet somehow you have kept that, you protected that agricultural land. What you promote is dear to me. My father was a farmer and was a professor in agriculture at UMass. So I've always grown up with that. I did not grow up farming. I just started to get into herbs, that's it. So I'm not a farmer. But, you know, my dad got us up at five o'clock every morning and that's when we had to get our stuff done. So I grew up with a lot of that work ethic of a farmer. But even just sitting there waiting, it was just so nice. How ironic, I'm seeing this senior center, which has really been my whole route is being a senior center, and I'm looking at cornfields, only in Hadley, only in Hadley. And I thought that was, so that's a lot of it.
Yeah. And then I just had a question on just a little bit of what you're speaking about. Just that you are new to the select board, you're municipal junkie, but how do you feel you would be with the, kind of the nuts and bolts of being a town administrator when it comes to knowing, you know, what dates you can have, town meetings, special town meeting, what we kind of can and can't do in open session versus closed session? All those kinds of things that are, you know, a lot of us don't know on the select board, but our town administrator has been there for us to guide us along all of the nuts and bolts.
So even though I had not sat in the position of a town administrator, I've had my hands in so many different areas of municipal government. So I am very familiar with open meeting law. And because of my role in finance, we had to know that budget cycle. So we knew things had to get done and when it was time, those certain deadlines and counting back to when the warrant checking prepared. So I understand all that. One of the things that I, I think has helped me so much is I have had mentors throughout my life during different, different periods of my life. I asked, I met the mentor who has met with me almost up until he got a position in Concord, had, was meeting with me on a monthly basis. And we would just work through things and say, this is what's coming up. And one of the things I think that I can bring to the table is what I've learned from Stephen, who is my mentor, and from being under actually several town managers because that first transition of a charter, a new charter is very difficult. And Islam Meadow is having a challenge, which is where I work. And so we've kind of eaten up some town managers. So I have learned what not to do or how to, well, that, that person could have done a better job communicating this and who, who should have been brought into that table. And then also, one of the things, Stephen, because one of the questions that was asked in my interview when I was here, not today, but two weeks ago was, you know, I don't know if they were asking about my weakness, but I can be very passionate. And some people can say that I can be, you know, aggressive. But I really do believe it's passionate. If I feel strongly about something and I know that there's a really good benefit for it, I will be very, very strong and push for it. But there are times where I've, I've probably gone too far. And Stephen, who has taught me, this is what you don't do. This is the, you know, call me when you need to count down and something's been really aggravating. And so just having that, having that person call and say, Stephen, this is what's going on. What's the most effective way to deal with this? And he'll walk me through it because he's done it the wrong way before. And he's told me, this is the, I want to prevent you from having that. And so I've learned a ton, even just, just since I've known him, how much I change and how I respond to things. So, did I answer you?
Yeah, that was great. And then just a couple other things is, you know, COVID-19, it's kind of like a really hard time. It's very uncertain. You don't know what's happening. But it's, I also kind of view it as like a time to reinvent things a little bit because businesses are, you know, some are going, some are coming. There's kind of like a fresh slate to do things over again. What do you envision in a community like Hadley where we could kind of reinvent ourselves a little bit here?
Yeah.
You look at it that way.
Today, I learned a lot. And Jane, I just, I'm learning from somebody that I should know everything about, elder services. But when we were talking about what to do, what could, how to make a safer place for the older adults to eat, to do, to bring that early bird, to make those suggestions to our restaurants, to bring that, a time where it's just seniors, where there not going to be that fear of too many people around, just like they do with the grocery shop. And I loved it. I called my work right away and said, you know, this is a great idea. So I think it's things like that. And even, even today when we met and we were talking, you know, when we were talking with the inspection issues and fire department and police and building, you know, I was, I was thinking and knowing what we did in Wolverham. And thinking of some of these changes that could have come from that meeting, if it was a real meeting and we actually had time to patch it over. Some of the changes that may take place, whether it's streamlining or, you know, even just, just being able to have that outdoor seating and to be able to accommodate, things like that, that may be something to take further. You know, maybe some of that things, some of those things won't be temporary. Maybe those are a really good idea to, to maintain. So I think it says we're learning to address the issues of COVID and how it's impacting every single department, that there are things at each apartment that, that may be a permanent solution and it's a better solution that we wouldn't have thought of unless it was, unless COVID had occurred.
And then my last question is just about kind of diversity in the community and if you have any experience, you know, making, whether it be committees, municipal government, senior centers, kind of more open and accepting to a more diverse population.
So we certainly deal with that with the councils on aging and the Mass Association of Councils on Aging and dealing with diversity. Wasn't there 20 years ago and I've been in the network for a long time. Wasn't there. But that is, I, I think that is probably one of the best things I've seen. It's happened quickly in the past several years that you haven't seen before. So I've been a part of that at the MCOA level. So I am sure, just with my involvement with NMA, I see what's coming down the line and committees that are getting formed and resolutions that are getting presented to bring down to different levels in school districts. They are a very good source. And so I think we'll see some of those templates coming down and suggested to municipalities.
Thank you. That's, I'm good with questions, I don't know.
I was curious as to, I enjoy some of the select persons that you haven't met yet.
And sometimes you're in the medical setting.
I am in the medical.
My daughter's in there, so.
I'll be celebrating 50 years with Chloe.
Congratulations.
So we're kind of on that roll. I don't know, I'm going to retire, but that's another issue.
I'll retire.
My thing is, is what, how would you balance being a select person and a town administrator? I sometimes don't know how David does all he does in 24 hours. He still stays on top of anything with doing the budget and keeping everything straight. And I do know that at times on the select board, it's very time consuming also to be a participant on the select board. How are you going to balance that?
So, and that's a fair question. And I, if I were in your place right now, I would be asking the same thing. One of the benefits, I am the newbie, so I will not have the chairman. But I got us being on the chair of the finance committee and literally met every single week from pretty much the end of October until May, sometimes June. And I was able to balance that. And oftentimes it was more than that because I was also on the subcommittee meeting. Our, we have, I have a regional school district in Wolverham. So we had subcommittee meetings every Monday night for a long time through that whole budget season. So there was oftentimes, it was two meetings a night. Obviously, my priority is here. And I made, one of the other things is, okay, I got to check when does Hadley leave? Because that would have been, you know, a difficult thing. And your meetings are on Wednesdays and Wolverham's is on Mondays. I, I will always be involved at some level in my local government and in my, in my position. I am that much of a junkie. People have other, my husband loves to fish. I'm often online looking at everybody's website and love discovering the master plan and the service layout. So I, I don't do well staying still for a long period of time.
It's just that he has a lot of night meetings also, so you can't always count on just being, going to a Wednesday night meeting. He goes to finance committee meetings. He, I don't know, spreads himself quite thin. He's got a lot of different areas that it goes through throughout the day. He doesn't even have TV, so what does that tell you? Maybe that's why I'm not sure.
That might help, that may be why.
But I mean, that's, that's his choice. And he's been, you know, steadfast for 15 years. So that's the difference of just being, and I'm not downplaying being a senior director, but you do have that opportunity and freedom that you are not having to do a lot of things in the evening also so that you're available to do town things and city things that you, you know, make yourself available for that.
Yeah.
That's the difference between the two. And that's what I'm looking at here, what you're.
Yeah, and I, and I, I do, I would be asking those same questions. Except it's hard for me to say, I have a huge energy level. And I, I do suspect that there would be some conflicts. Tonight, there was a conflict. We had a last minute Board of Selectment meeting and I called and said, you have a forum? They said, yes. And I said, I can't be there, it's way too important. And so I, I've got a, I want to say to all of you, I, I can do it, I can. But I would want that conversation to be open and say, Karen, if we don't think you can do that, then next year, that, I would have to make that decision whether I wanted to run for selectmen again. Because this is what I, this is what I want. This is what I want for the next 10 years. So I would absolutely be very open about that. And if there was any concerns with the selectmen. And if there was any concerns with a selectman, if you would give me that.
And that was another question I was going to ask, what's your longevity?
My longevity?
Your longevity of taking an administrator's position, what's your timeframe?
Is 10 years too long?
Nothing is too long, look at me, I mean, you know.
I know, you don't hear.
You know, you can do whatever you feel like you can.
Yeah, I am not, I don't do well at home. When I, I was home briefly when COVID started and pretty much said, I can't work from home. And the Senior Center was really busy. I needed to be there. My staff was home. When my friends are telling me they're retiring for no other reason but then they want to, not for health reasons or anything, I'm like, why? Why? And so it's just, it's in my blood. I just, I really like to work and I don't do well, literally mentally, if I'm not busy and working and building on something, you know, creating something. For me, that's creating in the municipal atmosphere.
I can understand that. But I, you know, of course, I've got to ask these questions in my own mind. I can't do well sitting at home either.
Yeah, I got that from you.
So my other thing is that we've talked about OPEB previously. We were one of the first towns that, you know, jumped right in and started putting money into that. Are you familiar with?
Yes.
The OPEB thing? You were on Finance, so what's your thoughts on it?
And this year, we had to do a little bit less than we normally did, but not a lot. You know, Wolverham, really, we don't depend as much on state aid. So we really did okay towards the end of fiscal year '20. In '21, we have not made any cuts. We are still working on the negotiations in which those increases are going to be. But we are in a fairly good place right now, but cautious, but cautious. So we didn't, you know, I actually think we fully funded what we usually put aside for OPEB. And I know, remembering watching some of your ThinkCom, you weren't able to put as much in as this year, as usual. I think that it's important. We've got to keep that money in there.
There were so many other communities that haven't even done anything.
It amazes me. I did not think that there were communities I hadn't until being involved with MMA and just getting, sitting in a lot of different committees and stuff. I realize that it really is a significant problem, so.
The whole town has been my thing, I think, having people in places such as Anne, Dr. Kenzie is our superintendent and she does so well with our school system and our fire chief and our police chief. I mean, we hire people that are going to enhance our community. And I think I've been lucky enough over doing this for 18 years that it's been, you know, we've gotten our community, we're moving still in the right direction. We're not done yet with what we need to do, but we're working at it still. Any thoughts on fire, police? Probably have already talked about this, so your other thing, we've done a great stride in the last few years, but we're not done yet.
Right. So thoughts specifically towards fire, police? Is that what your question is? I work very closely with ours in Isla Meadow. I'm part of the emergency management team. And I said it before, but the week of the 2011 October storm was the happiest week of my career. And it was getting, it was just police, fire, council on aging, weird departments clicked, like IT. So the core group was, believe it or not, our cable access person who became our advocate in shelter, was our, he was our advocate, making sure seniors have their medicine and all of that. And then IT was our point person as far as getting all that information out. And then I just worked really closely with police and fire regarding the residents who are still out in the community and those that needed to come in. But that has been one of my favorite things is being part of the emergency management team and being a shelter director. I work very closely with the two of our chiefs, so.
Could you remind me of how many people in Wolverham is and what the budget is?
So how many people in Wolverham? Wolverham is just under 15,000. And the budget is, what did I say this morning? I'm not even sure that they're totally accurate, but we have a regional school district, which is about 26 million, I think it's about 23 million. And then, so combined, it's about, I want to say 40 and 48 million. And don't go back and check because I'm just not 100% sure. There's just, today's been a little, my brain's been all over the place today.
I'll ask the same two questions I asked Tom. Free cash, what's your viewpoint on that? How should it be used and what's its purpose?
Ah, it's such a great finance, finance question because we have differences on our finance committee about how free cash should be spent. I do see that there's a purpose at times to use free cash to support building projects. I am not a fan of supporting ongoing expenses, ongoing operating expenses. I don't think that's what it's really intended for, unless it's a tough year and you need that. I am a saver, both with stabilization and with free cash. As I mentioned earlier today, because of times like this, I think they're important. But there are opposing opinions on that on our finance committee. Some don't think that we should do that. So I guess I'm a little bit more protective over it mentally, not as the previous chair, but.
And then the other question, a hard one, but Hadley isn't the highest paying town in the state. And so I just want to make sure you're familiar with the advertised salary range and that's something that's acceptable.
It's municipal and it's COVID. And I think that's the best response and.
Yeah, I'll ask the same two questions I had. Grants and short-term loans or borrowing, are you familiar with the NDA?
I am. So that's probably 70% of my job is grant writing. And I was trying to calculate going back 30 years, how much money I generated through grants. And it's millions through our building projects and also getting earmarks from the state. I have really good relationships with our legislatures, which I think is really, really important to build up those relationships because we've been able to get earmarked for two senior centers that I've worked at, as well as I've entered Memorial Building right now. And that was just last year, so that was great. But going back, but, you know, all the programs that take place in the senior center, it's not fully funded by municipal funding. A good portion of it is through grants, but, so I worked, I have a mobile food pantry that we just put off the ground. That was all grant funded for community development. I work closely with Pioneer Valley Plan and Commission to work together to get grants for our towns. Sponsorships going after banks. I said it this morning, I'm a professional beggar, I have no problems asking for money at bartering or saying, give me this and I'll give you that. And, you know, we can, you want to sponsor something, I'll put your name on that. Not permanently, but I'll put your name on that and you can pay for this aspect of an event or something like that. So I am familiar with that. Bartering, I'm certainly aware of, certainly through the finance classes you take through the MBA, through the subject program, but also working with my treasurer. When I was going to those programs, he taught me a lot about short-term borrowing and how he manages that, which I think is brilliant. He was one of the, I don't know a lot of the treasurers, but the ones that I do know, he does a phenomenal job. So that it's not a big shock in the community when a big project comes up.
Short-term habits of all of ourselves. And the second question is, with the situation we're in with Culver and stuff like that, how do you, how do you think you're going to handle level funding for the next year or two if we need to go that route?
So I think in the first part of the question.
With the situation we're in with Culver, how do we handle, how do you handle level funding across the board with all the departments if we have to go in that direction? If taxpayers didn't want to fund it?
Right. So I've experienced two different things. In Isla Meadow, layoffs began in May, right away. In Wolverham, we have not laid off anybody. I'm not a fan of every single department, you get, you're going to have to go down a certain amount or you're going to have to cut a certain amount.
No, just level fund, not cuts.
Level fund. I think level funding, and I'm sure you've heard the term before, level funding and level services is two different things.
Yes.
And I think that each department have to look at that individually on the impact on that department. And it is up to the department head to be able to, you need with that department to find out what's the impact. And then I think it has to be able to be presented to the Board of Selectmen on what that impact will be.
Similar figure of needs list and wish lists.
Yeah. And I'm going to tell you, just being in municipal for so long, I do feel like department heads in general do do a really good job of, you know, the, people love to say zero base. Really, we always do that. But when it comes into a situation like this, I have not experienced where there's been a lot of department heads that have just not truly looked at their budget and cut them in due to. I think that is the difference within a municipal environment versus a private. I think they're able to look at their department uniquely and say, what can you, what can you handle? But I think in many cases, you have to look at departments differently. It's hard for me as a council on aging director, when I know if a department, especially safety, is not going to have a dramatic cut. It's hard for a department head in my situation where we're begging, you know, we get money from off rates and all of that. But I, because I've been so involved with Finance Committee and different roles with Mass Municipal Association, I understand those now. And the key is how to explain that to your department heads. And I think that's what I've seen has lacked, is not being able to, having a town administrator come to you and say, as a department head, this is what we have to do, this is the impact. How can you work with me, let me see what your budget, what's going to happen if it's level funded? So I guess, I get hesitant to say everything's level funded. So I guess.
Well, within their departments, you're not, you're not, everybody's going to be standing across the board in their own departments. You're not taking 60% of one department and 20% of another. Level funding, to me, across the board, what you were operating with last year, you will be operating again this year.
Yeah, and so I think that's my response is to level fund a police department has a much more significant impact than it would on a department not providing that same type of service.
Any last question? Well, thank you very much for spending some time with us again today.
Thank you. I almost feel like family. Something to meet because you got things to teach me. So thank you. It's nice to meet everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your name is Laura. Oh, I'd love to, thank you. I didn't sign up today.
So now five or some deliberations. Let's, actually, let's hear from the committee, since you guys decided to spend some more time with us this evening. Do you have any input either way? You'd like to provide, if not, I was okay too.
Just for the education of the folks who weren't at the other interviews who've had a chance to maybe read all of the, I'd say, question answers. I will say, I don't know if everybody agrees with me, that the interviews that both of the candidates did tonight were certainly more in line with how they performed the first time with the committee, in my opinion. I think both of them, earlier today when they were doing their presentation portion, definitely didn't do as well. And tonight was probably a better example of how they did the first time around, which is kind of what we used as a committee to rank them and bring them back in. So I would say what we saw tonight was more in line with how they reacted to the questions that we had, as well as, you know, their answering of your questions was certainly more on par with how I would assume they would actually handle those scenarios, as opposed to what we did earlier today, which was a department head meeting, more of a simulation just to try to see how they could handle it. So I think we probably gained a little bit more knowledge of how they would do the job from this than maybe we got earlier today. That's just my take on it.
Anybody else? Paul, Chief, Dr. Kenzie?
Well, I think we had some pretty robust discussions, as you know, after the interviews. And a lot of it boiled down to experience on one hand versus maybe a little more energy on the other. We were also discussing longevity, but tonight, both the candidates addressed that, those issues, but I think that's been answered for us, so that's no longer a concern. I don't lie, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but longevity raises a heavy question. Been on many search committees throughout my career and it seems to always work out and we go with longevity versus some individual who hasn't the experience in the position, not even one day, experience. That's the decision you as a Board of Selectmen have to make tonight, of one of the considerations that we have to put in play.
I learned a little bit more from both candidates. Unfortunately, it must be the second interview, but I learned some additional stuff tonight that I don't think you guys have to make the decision, I'm just glad that we passed through that. I've been into extremely good candidates. I have in my mind, I have in my mind who I would choose. And, but I would prefer the decision that you guys make. I know that I don't want to do a great job. And I'm just looking forward to moving forward in the future and adding new and be consistent with what we have going on right now. One thing I did bring up today was the fact that we have some really strong department heads, Joyce used on that too. We have a really good team together. That's a good foundation for and support for a town administrator. You know, David has, I think, fostered that as well. So I think whoever's coming in is going to feel that, is going to feel that people want to be there and in the board.
I think that the Select Board has two great candidates to choose from. I think, yeah, I would be equally comfortable with whatever choice the Select Board makes. We interviewed great people and I feel good about all the folks that we brought forward this afternoon. I don't think you all could go wrong. And I'm really still recovering from the fact that David doesn't have TV. Sorry, I'm out of air.
I can help you, David. I know you do other things besides.
I actually do it a little.
You do that. Sometimes I always like it didn't because.
You get a TV after you retire.
You give it to him, he's a farewell.
Free your service with that cable or something to go with.
So I'm a little concerned about the way that he answered the question about salary.
I actually am as well. I mean, by no means was I asking him to negotiate a salary in public. I was just making sure that he's familiar with the advertised range and that's what he was okay with sticking with him. So that, to me is.
Because there was something in his early writing that said that salary should be commensurate with experience, indicating to me that he didn't think that what we were offering for this job was appropriate.
But I also didn't think that tonight was an appropriate place. I think he maybe had misjudged the question and maybe thought that you wanted to talk about salary. And I don't think this is the place when you're interviewing them to have a discussion of salary, that should be done privately also.
I don't think, but I didn't hear the question that way, it was just, do you understand what we're offering?
And that was my intention. I don't know if it came across room, but that was.
If I may, one of the things that we do as consultants is, we have phone interviews with, we have talked to all 13. And one of the questions we ask is, are you aware of the salary range? You know, do you have any issues? You know, it was like 90 to, I think, 110. Are you okay with that range? And, you know, they all said yes. So they all, and we do that because we have some people that say, well, you know, I'm moving from Eastover Shu and I and I, and I, and then you say, well, you know, you're not getting any more than one ten. I mean, it, or whatever the number is. So we always verify that they know what the salary range is, so that things don't break down. If you, if you should make a tentative appointment to Ms. Jones, Ms. Jones says, oh, well, I, she, I didn't know. Of course they knew, I asked them, and you asked them here. So I, I personally, I didn't interpret it like he was gonna look for a penny more, because you published, you published the top end.
And even if he had mentioned that in his.
Right example.
Writing example, that, experience does count when you're hiring somebody and you're going for a job. It does depend on what your experience is and what's gonna be offered to you for salary. That does play a factor, as long as it's not within outside of the range that we are already offering.
Long as it's within the range.
That's right.
Right. And I think, you know, with his experiences, probably looking to start, start at the higher end of the range, as opposed to the lower end of the range. That's kind of the way I interpreted, interpreted his comment.
Yeah, I wasn't offended by that. I think he just misunderstood the question.
If I had to, like, throw a candidate out there, I would, I would say I like Carolyn's energy a lot, and I like her passion in it. I know what Paul's saying, with experience and not being a risk. But I just got the feeling from her that she's really invested in doing this. I mean, she spent the past, I was impressed on her resume, how much effort she's put into getting to this point, and has made a lot of investment in that. And I kind of feel like, just her energy level, her commitment, would be a great, you know, injection of enthusiasm into the town on a certain level, and a fresh set of eyes, has experience being on the other end of, of being a department head and knowing what that's like. And I think that's a really great perspective to bring to that town administrator. So that's just kind of how I feel about it. I, I think they're both great candidates. I don't think we can really make a wrong decision, but just if I had to choose one, that would be the choice I would go with.
And I, I do have the concern about her being on the Board of Selectmen and doing an administrator's job. I think the two of them combined in opposite towns. I mean, I, I wasn't kidding, on how much work it entails to be an administrator. Thank God we have an assistant administrator, assistant that helps our administrator, but when you're also a part of a select board, there's a lot that goes into that also. So I, I do have concerns about that also.
But she did acknowledge that too, and say she was willing to evaluate that, and this, this is what she wants to do, as being a town administrator, not be on a select board, so.
But she also didn't say she'd give up being on the select board.
She said she wouldn't run it any year.
Unless she was just put on, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
So, now you've got three years of, on a select board.
She may be telling like one year. But I don't know.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either, but anyway, that would be my concern.
I thought that we both, I like all of their, both of their answers.
So, what are we gonna do? John, you're quiet over there, what do you have to say? You always have one for the side, come on.
Well, it's gonna be the deciding vote. Yeah, I, I don't think we're gonna make a bad a choice either way. If you offered it to Tom, and he didn't accept it, then are we going to go after the second one? Or, was it a quick thought of that?
Well.
Now that I brought it up.
No, it, it's, it's a fair question. The, the way the motion would read for the appointment, so-called, is, it's a tentative offer subject to three things. Subject to successful negotiation of a, a negotiation of a contract, success, a satisfactory background check, and a town physical, if you require one. And I don't know, David, if it's, sometimes do, sometimes don't.
You just need to have skin like your officers.
Yeah. So.
Well, that is a medical condition.
So it, you know, it is contention on two things then. Could you go back, if you're unsuccessful with candidate A, go back to candidate B? Yes, you can. Could it be a little clunky? It can be, but if candidate B really wants it, then, and if you, you know, you feel strongly that they're very close, but there's something about A that just had that little edge, you know, little edge. It, it's not unusual to go back, but, well, so you can, short answer is you can.
So, my, my two concerns with the candidates are, Tom is very experienced, obviously, which to me means that he's, has a set way of doing things, and he's used to doing things in born, or however he does it, and maybe that's not going to be a good fit for him. Change can be difficult, and so that's something to think about. It could be, even though he has the experience, it could be a rough transition. For Carolyn, my concern is, she's been in government for a long time. The problem is that experience, most of it, is council on aging, which is great, but it's a very narrow field as far as town government goes. So does that necessarily translate into being a good administrator? I don't know. So, that's kind of the two negatives that I'm weighing between the two. You know, the, the passion she has is fantastic, and the energy, then that could, that could be a good benefit for the town. But on the other hand, you've got those other two negatives to consider.
So, I'm, I'm going with Carolyn's energy. And I think we, as a town, have something to offer that makes a difference there, and that is our tenant administrator will be available for the next five months as a resource for her. And that's very unusual, and I think in this case, we really get her feet on the ground and have her. And I agree with you, I think that having is not born at all. And sometimes I worry about people who have done a job for too long, that they just have a booting. It's like academics, who teach the same class year after year. I was married to one for a while. Year after year, and it gets old, and it gets tired, and they don't have to work about it, and they don't have to think about it. It just comes out. And it may not be the best for this town if it's done the way it was done before.
So, any further discussion? Any motion one way or another, sitting one way or another?
I'll move.
Yep.
I'll work Carolyn's job.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Well, just to amend that, the subject to contract negotiation for background check.
Yeah, there's a very specific motion, which I'll hand you in the moment.
Yep.
And we're not supposed to be touching papers, so.
Don't worry, I'll manage.
Thank you. So I move to authorize Municipal Resources Incorporated to make a conditional offer for the appointment to Carolyn.
Bren.
Bren.
Bren, thank you. For the position of town administrator in the town of Hadley. This offer is conditioned upon the satisfactory background review and investigation conducted by the town of Hadley, and the successful negotiation of the terms of appointment by the Select Board.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those who got?
No.
Joyce?
Jay, Joyce.
You didn't say one way or another. You're the decider.
Oh, shit.
See, you didn't speak quicker.
You gotta speak quicker.
No, John, you're a waiter. What did I go now?
Then, would you make, somebody make the second?
I'll make a motion to. Whatever she said.
I think you gotta read it.
I move to authorize Municipal Resources Incorporated to make a conditional offer to employment to Tom.
Carina.
Carina.
Carina. For the position of town administrator in the town of Hadley. This offer is conditioned upon the satisfactory background review and investigation conducted under the town of Hadley, and successfully negotiated of terms of appointment by the Select Board.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, that?
Aye.
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 I was gonna say no.
Yes. All right, so, motion carries.
I'd like to make another motion, that if we do not have a successful contract negotiation with Tom, that we are able to offer the position to Carolyn.
Second on that.
Second.
Any discussion on that? I'd just say that Jay and I, as the committee members, that'll be working on the contract negotiations. It's my intention that we're firmly within that salary range. So, if there's any trying to sneak above that, that's gonna be an enormous burden, in my opinion.
And is that salary range, you think, benefits? What, what is, what does that specifically say?
I think you can get into that afterwards with David and Mark drawing up a contract. We don't need to do that tonight. There's also even want to put in their probationary period also, to make sure that, you know, either three months, six months, just to make sure things are cohesive.
So, all those in favor of contract negotiations with background fails, offer to, kind of?
Aye.
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 Okay. Committee members, thank you for all your time, lots and lots of time, and lots and lots of work, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
My pleasure. Good working with you folks, David, I'll be in touch.
Certainly.
I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow, I'll inform the candidates tonight, and the chief. I will get a release from Tom that will acknowledge that a background check will be done. The chief will be in touch with him about the details on what exactly he needs, so he can do the investigation.
All right, sounds good.
Good.
Thank you for your work, Les.
Thank you.
Before I go, is this the last time I'm gonna see you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
God bless and good watch, and just keep you safe.
Thank you. It's been a happy pleasure, I look forward to my return. My secret.
I wanna go and watch some TV.
John.
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 Take that, yeah?
John, I wanna keep that, please.
Oh.
Since, since you made it special. Sorry.
No, that's all right.
All right, we're just gonna take a two-minute recess here, and then we'll, we'll keep going on the agenda. All right, so we'll continue on the agenda. Let's take care of the polling location change. Town clerk had asked the Select Board to vote on changing the polling location from Hopkins Academy to the new senior center. All voters must be notified by mail twenty days before the next election, which is September first, 2020. The state will survey, survey the new location in July, which is actually already been done. And the state has approved of the change in polling location to the senior center already. So that's taken care of. Fire chief had something to say?
She just wondered, like, you know, it's not required to notify, but she feels that it's very important to do it, so she's still waiting.
Yep. Yeah, we, David and I spoke with her about it, and we said, please notify everybody, even if it's not required.
And we really like, because if we bring people into this building, they aren't legal to see otherwise.
Motion to accept.
Second. Just to be temporary for?
No, for a minute.
For a minute.
Any further discussion?
All of it ready?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, jumping around here, moving right along. David, can we wait on the capital plan till August, is that?
Yep.
Okay, because that might take a little while to. Cable franchise, that can wait till August, correct?
Yep.
What is the date on that?
The cable franchise agreement, I think it's, uh, Lindt Arch, 2024.
But it's a three-year process.
Yeah.
So, one of the things, just to quickly about this, is I think we should change the name of the committee when we appoint a committee. It's not an oversight committee anymore, it's a committee to focus on contract.
I think there's two. One is an oversight committee for having media, and one is for negotiations, correct, David?
Correct.
Okay, so two, two separate, is what we need.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll put that on hold. Let's take care. Yeah, let's do the abatement, sewer abatement, this will be a quick one. Sewer abatement for.
What number, please?
Six five.
Six five? For forty Russell Street, due to a lottery leak. Both the collector and the DPWs recommend against. And typically, if water passes through the meter, it's bills, regardless of what happens in the person's parking, uh, person's property, so.
Motion to deny.
Can we get a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Understand.
Okay. That was a quick one.
Okay. For what, Alvin?
Let's do RFP for landfill, that's a quick one. Just would like to authorize David to put out an RFP, to see what we can get. You know, a lot of towns have solar on their landfills and things like that. You have a big chunk of land right there that's being used for nothing, maybe it can generate some revenue for the town. So, maybe nobody would be interested, but it doesn't hurt to put it out, so that's why I asked David to put that on there.
Do we have a, an example from another town that did this? I mean, I mean, Northampton did it on there, so there has to be something there.
I mean, I can, I know there's a few towns in Eastern Mass, and there are some grant programs, which we missed out on for, for doing that.
Okay.
We can pull some examples.
And we don't, we don't have a contract with them that's gonna interfere with our use of that part of the.
So they, they get the area, the dump that they operate the transfer station in, for free. And the rest of the actual landfill is still owned and maintained by the town. We have to do tests and things like that on the cap, so, no, we still have control over those areas. Could I get a motion to authorize David to put it out?
So.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's do affordable housing trustees appointment, number six point four. Annual town meeting approved the general bylaw relating to an affordable housing trust fund. The Select Board is asked to appoint the trustees for a one-year period. Planning Board has volunteered to serve as the first board, along with one or more Select Board members, in the interest of time and to secure funds currently being held by others, which is an attorney's trust fund, as soon as possible. Planning Board suggests that the customary letters of interest be put on hold until next year. I think Christian was interested in.
Yeah, I, I offered to serve on the board, or, is it board?
Yes, and I would like to join you on there, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Any, any other interest in it?
Two to none.
All right, so.
I think you have, I think you have to appoint the planning board members as well.
Okay.
Did you say Bill Meyer?
I think we need five total.
It was the entire planning board, and then one or two slackers? Because it says the planning board would serve as the.
First board along.
Yeah, I thought we talked about. Or bold board.
So, why don't we appoint the entire planning board?
Yeah.
And then the two slacker members for now.
So.
Is that okay? Okay, any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Marijuana community host agreement, does this need to be done tonight, or are we on a timeline here, or?
Yeah, if we could, if we could take care of the contracts, other than that.
Okay.
Shall we be meeting next week, this plan?
No.
As usual.
No. No.
Next one is August fifth.
August fifth. You're welcome.
David, would you mind just telling us what the differences are, like are there any changes?
Yeah, no.
So the, uh, the, the select board took a vote in having to do it to the entrance and then, uh, I think it was the, uh, of Hadley Holistics in the Hampshire Mall, uh, we incorporated those requirements into the new, uh, community host agreement. The sale in featured, the new community host agreement with, uh, the town gets three percent of gross revenue from retail sales of the W's marijuana. Um, the Hadley Holistics, uh, contributes $10,000 to a Hadley Charitable Fund that they've already named it. They started the document and so I don't wanna say it out loud until we have a chance to, uh, commit fully to this. And then there are certain performance measures that they need to adhere to. Uh, and we can renegotiate this in a five-year contract, so. This is a five-year contract, three percent, $10,000, plus forty hours of community service, um, and renegotiation.
How does?
With the change, uh, entrance.
How does this compare to our host agreement with the heirloom collective, is it?
It's about the same.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I can make a motion that we sign the hosting agreement with Hadley Holistics.
Second.
Second. Has this been P P five, police and fire?
Uh, no, it hasn't. I haven't viewed the actual agreement, put everything right up to it, as long as I was involved in the process for the first one, so if it's not part of that one, I was involved in that.
And they haven't pulled any permits, like building permits or anything along those lines yet, so that would have to get signed off from police and fire.
Okay.
Yeah.
Planning board as well, I guess, for a site plan. Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, good, good.
Then, then we have the accounting agreement to extend that for one more year before going on to fit it.
I'd like to pull that until we have our scheduled conversation on Friday and then put, move that to the fifth, if that, or our next meeting, if that all goes well.
Alright.
And then it mentions ambulance service, but I see two Hadley agreements attached, is there an ambulance amendment?
Uh, yeah, we are still working on that, so that, we're not ready for.
Okay. So that's it for that?
And I'm still working on the point software, I sent over the device contract to point and I'm not ready to act on it. So I should send it, let's, 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 I'm saying, you know, time's wasting.
So, um, I, we may have done this already, but can someone move that we allow David or myself to sign the contract on behalf of the select board once we're ready, so we don't have to wait till August?
So.
Second.
Yeah, chair.
This is with the, uh, the building inspection software?
Okay. So we have a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And.
I think the chief, you, you were, because we were gonna be talking about is the, uh, diversity inclusion committee?
Yeah, I, I saw on the agenda, I know that it was something that had come up, you know, last year, Christian and I had discussed it, discussed it with David a little bit, so. Just.
We'll jump into that then. Alright, so we voted to establish a diversity and inclusion committee, I think, a year or so ago and, uh, maybe two years ago. And we don't have any members currently, but Christian has volunteered to chair the committee, I think, right?
Yeah, I, you know, we did meet this week, actually, kind of a preliminary group of people to try to get it kicked off. And I, I wanted to kind of hold this off until the, the next meeting, so that we could kind of, you know, we have this one mission statement, but I was hoping to put some people together. Um, some people did have the, an issue with the word civility, so we might just tweak the name a little bit, so it's more in line. So that's gonna be the goal right now, is to kind of have that mission statement, the organization and the name by the August fifth meeting. And, you know, as far as police involvement goes, I wanna just balance that. I want your involvement and I want your input, but I also don't wanna intimidate people from having like, uh, being fearful of being open in discussion, so I, we just need to talk about how we wanna best integrate that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't, uh, trying to force my way in.
No, no, it's not.
I was gonna handle it very similarly to, you know, how I, I attended some of the, the, uh, race-related discussions that had gone on at Hadley and. It was more just an offer.
Yeah.
If, I read the, the mission statement and it certainly doesn't, it's not directed at the police department.
No.
It's more directed as a community-wide effort. But I'd like to offer myself or, you know, who's kinda a co, to be available in the event that you wanted us on the, on the committee to, to discuss things having to do with the police department, or uh, if you'd like to solicit input, when there comes a time during a meeting where you're discussing something about the police department.
Yeah, that's, I, I would love your involvement, I just don't wanna have people feel like, oh, there's gonna be police watching this type of thing, have that image. And so I completely respect you, your opinion and your involvement in it, and I just wanna balance that with everybody's needs and pull, pull you in as needed and as we can have a, a better dialogue. And I think part of the conversation we had was, what is the mission statement? What is the goal of this committee right now, because if you just look at it broadly, we could go in thirty different directions. And I was kind of like, let's come up with some achievable goals that people are interested in doing, instead of having broad goals that aren't really, you can't achieve, you know? And so that's what we're kind of working on.
Yeah, so if you were gonna hold off till the fifth, you know, whether I'm there at the meeting or not, I guess that's what I would put to the board today.
Yeah.
So that you're aware that we are willing to be involved.
Yeah.
If, if you want us.
Oh yeah, I definitely split, uh, as like the person, the select board liaison on to that committee, I want your involvement in it, but maybe not every meeting, you know?
Hear the poll, why don't you share?
We could, uh, I mean, it's, it's an ad hoc committee, but it would be nice if we couldn't. I was hoping actually to set it up where there could be a recording, like quarterly or, you know, something along those lines, presentation to the select board that engages a conversation. And maybe that's more recorded than individual discussions, so I, I don't know with ad hoc committees or, um, committees along this line, if they have to be recorded.
And I think we have to be very careful with this committee.
Yeah.
I think that, um, has been a little fuel in the fire along the way here over the past couple of years and I, you know, I don't know how many people have submitted their names to you, but we have had no discussion on how many people we would think would be appropriate for this committee without turning it into a, what's it say, it's like a bitch test.
Yeah.
But I think that, I think that this type of committee needs to have, like you say, your mission statement needs to certainly clarify on what the goals are gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
And not just be out there to, um, complain, complain, but how can we fix things, how can we go about things? And I think with the chief offering his presence, I think, I, I would like people to not feel intimidated that they are present and they are willing to do whatever they need to do, and I, you know, and that committee can certainly work with how they would like to have that offered. I think that's a good offer.
Yeah, I just wanna balance that, you know?
Yeah.
You said you had like ten names, something like that?
I think around ten people right now, yeah.
Before the fifth, will you let us know who they are?
Yeah, I, yeah, I was telling them, it would be really great to have something a week before the fifth, so we could give it to the select board, then you guys have a chance to review it, so you don't get there on the fifth and like.
What is, what is the number that we would like on the committee and?
A non-number please.
You don't wanna do what we did today?
Yeah, that six doesn't work very well.
I mean.
Yeah, sure, I'll do a good job.
We could shoot for nine members, but then have the meetings open to more people or something along those lines.
It certainly isn't open week.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
So if we do nine.
It's meant to be open.
You know, that's fine. I think fifteen on a committee is getting a little bit over.
Yeah, that would be a lot of voting matters, yeah.
Alright, well then, we'll put it back on the agenda for the fifth and you can bring it back and let us know. Alright, um, let's do budget transfers, six, seven point two, end of year line items.
Yeah, so there's, uh, four thousand five hundred and one dollars worth of, well, some of the transfers by the customer, so. These are very small transfers, uh, just cleaning up line item set, uh, of the brand. And I've already talked to the, the finance committee chair, so she knows that this is coming.
We get a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second. Second from Christian, any further discussion on the transfers? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's nothing, everybody standing on the boat.
Yep, pretty good. Let's see, we have, um, COVID-19 update, David, do you have anything you wanna hit on that?
Yeah, just very briefly, the, uh, governor just moved us into the first part of phase three, which means that we have more restaurants, retail shops, sports arenas, museums, uh, other venues, uh, that are opening up and so we continue to work with our business community to make sure that licenses, inspections, all of this is expedited. Uh, there's also the revision on the, um, gatherings requirements, so there are more opportunities for people to gather in higher numbers. Obviously, prevention of transmission of this disease is paramount, so there are different, uh, requirements based upon where you are, what you're doing, whether indoors or outdoors, um, you gotta wear a mask where you have to participate in some way to prevent the disease from transmitting from one person to another. So a lot of details there, a lot of conditional, uh, permissions, uh, but basically things are opening up in Massachusetts, uh, more broadly.
I think the main thing that we need to really be concerned about and aware of, and I'm not sure if anybody, if we've had any contact with somebody from the five college areas, with all of the students inverging on this area now, um, August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we are now gonna have quite a few people traveling in from across the country to go to these colleges. So our, our awareness and our guard needs to be up even higher, uh, especially with people coming from areas of Florida and Texas, areas that right now are unindated with COVID patients, that their, uh, hospitals are, uh, in a mess down there, so they're having no beds, in their ICUs. So I mean, now we're gonna be kind of coming into this area from across the country and I, and I think we need to put out there, any conversation at all with colleges, Mike, about the COVID and, and what they're doing, I know that they put in the paper certain rules and guidelines that they want their students to adhere to, but when students are living off campus, it's gonna be kind of hard to, uh, keep track of them.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a unified commandment meeting that I'm trying to set up for this Friday, so talking about phase three reopening, new, new gathering rate, which is, uh, five colleges, we live in a thirty candidates community, so we're gonna be thinking about all of that and so.
Even, even bigger than that, uh, I'm starting to work with schools right now, the schools are, they have some really big challenges coming up, so we're gonna be working closely with them planning and making sure that we have resources available, cause it's, it's not, it's still not easy to get stuff. So, so we are working on that planning department.
Has there been definitive, definitive plan placed to the schools right now?
No, they're still waiting for, for guidance from the state, once that guidance come out, they can, they can kind of work towards their, their plans, but we're, you know, we're starting to have dialogue to make sure that we're headed up.
So before we get too far down the line with, uh, through the calendar year here, could we reach out to various departments and have them total up what? Because we're supposed to be keeping track of expenditures for possible reimbursement, I just wanna make sure we're keeping on top of that? And so we're not trying to remember what we spent six months from now?
We have, uh, there's been, I mean, there's been a few, uh, items that have gone through other departments, but everything has been followed through my emergency management budget.
Okay.
Bills were just shipped out for the first responder hotels, so we'll be processing that, uh, I have the schools, uh, stuff, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing project, obviously, I've reached out to FEMA four or five times just to ensure that we're doing this properly and so the FEMA request and the CARES Act that fills in blanks after that, uh, we are working on it right now, it's due by Friday for some additional PPE, um, so, you know, we're still, we're still in response mode on, on some of this and so yes, we are keeping very good track, um, and, and documenting very closely what the purpose of the funding is, to make sure that it's supporting COVID, you know, actually COVID, um, response.
Could you just put out to the other departments, any expenditures they have related to it, maybe up to June thirtieth or something, make sure that the chief is aware, so that way we can get that reimbursed?
Yeah.
We have no patients that school with COVID.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. I'm very happy about that, um, the one thing that they're going to do now in the area is they're gonna be testing all nursing home personnel. So they're gonna all have to get tested right now at that point too. At the hospital, they've tested nurses that had to go from ICU, uh, those working in the OR and that nature of anybody that would be having close proximity before the OR had reopened up again, so.
All those in favor of discussion?
Uh, they have just tested the ones that had been not in those areas and have been on the floors working with COVID patients.
Um, just, uh, the library is, you know, possibly gonna talk about some reopening of the Goodwin. It's complicated because if you get this in the construction update, but the new library might be done around later day for moving in, so, you know, they don't have a lot of, a lot of two-month time period right now to do something in the Goodwin possibly, but I guess some clarification I wanted is just for us, phase three guidelines, the governor's putting out, those are the guidelines we're kind of basing all our opening on, so.
Same with the senior center?
Yeah, so we're kind of using that as a guide, as far as I'm concerned and what I've been telling the library for, you know, when they're thinking about reopening.
Yeah, the only concern, I think, as a unified command, we had from the library initially was if they're gonna be using a ton of PPE in order to conduct their normal business operations, then they need to look toward donations or at least reimbursement, you know, down the line, because we don't have a ton that we can give away unless we've gotten more.
That's what I'm getting, just as we're talking here, that, that could be a stumbling block.
Right. But yeah, let's get them open if we can.
Same thing, basically same thing with senior center operations.
The water.
Once we get there.
Page four.
And then we have the, them going in, who's, who's?
I mean, we.
That nature, touching everything in there, you know, it's computers and things that they have.
The water and wastewater has had minimal PPEs, uh, given to just water, just wastewater through the organizations, the municipal water. But on top of that, FEMA has given you guys more than enough to handle most of all the staff, police, fire.
It's, it's been, it's, it hasn't been easy, and it started to come out, but initially there really wasn't anything.
Oh no, there was nothing originally, but they're giving like the water and wastewater, giving minimal monitoring, so it's enough to keep the staff working, they're ready with schedules.
And for counting, the fire chiefs have the cash together, because we're, we wanna ensure that we have an increase in cases, that we will be able to still support the following after counter tag. So we did, uh, when prices were still a little bit lower on the ribbon, we do have that cash that's, that's available and we've been, you know, sharing it with other communities.
Okay. Let's go on, good? Uh, let's. Oh, let's do the library and fire station and senior center updates real quick and then.
I'll go first, you're here.
I'll go first, you're here.
Yeah.
We still have some, some bugs that we're working on, but basically.
Jane, there was a request from the OPM that we extend the contract.
Oh, right. And that's reasonable because we need our advocate to be behind us in terms of making sure all the problems get resolved. I don't know if you heard the beeping going on during the meeting? That's the internet problem with our emergency call system in the bathrooms. So we unplugged it, but it goes off at weird times and nobody, I had not thought about that while he was here today, but it's another issue. We're having a trouble, some of you may have noticed, with the sewage smell in the bathrooms and in the back art room, which is really coming from toilets down there. It appears from the plumber's viewpoint that drought has been poured down a drain that would normally be used to mitigate that smell away. So the plumber has been in, they're putting in all kinds of really terrible things to try and clean it out. And it's working somewhat, but it's a process.
It will plug toilets down.
No, it won't plug the toilets, it's just a stench.
Do toilets have traps on them and the drains do not? So have they wet all the traps to double check and make sure that they're not dry?
This has been going on since June 1st when we moved in. And yes, they have, because we're very hopeful about it.
Also the HVAC issues, right?
And the heating and air conditioning getting a temperature. They acknowledged that the system is working the way it was designed and they acknowledged that the residents in the building are not happy with the way the system is working. Mostly were really cold. At one point, they said, the easy way to fix this is we'll fire up the boilers as well as the air conditioners. And I said, no, that's not, that's not the inexpensive way to fix this. So I suggested that they reset their set points up four degrees because we were always four degrees cold. And they've done that and it seems all right there.
Okay.
Do you want to wish to extend the OPM contract for the Hadley senior center?
I'll start then.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then Joyce, fire station?
Fire station, yeah. We're not meeting until August 5th, we still want to hold up on that. Did you just mention slightly that we're looking into it?
Looking into it, we can mention it.
Go ahead. What about fiber optic? We're, we're putting fiber optic in from up at the North Hadley Fire Station down to the center. And it has come to Mike's attention that the senior center and the library in the town hall.
Yep, we're just going to, we're going to investigate what it would take to network all of these buildings together. So that way we'd be done with it. We're, we're working with Northeast IT and the IT folks for the projects because the plan is to try and have all of our fire alarms longer at the summer station. So by looking into this, we're hoping that we can, you know, stay up to our budget and then also just cover some shortfalls for some of the other projects.
Sound good, sounds good. One thing, go ahead.
The new North Hadley car station looks great with the sprinkler systems and the lawn and the mandatory water ban sign on the lawn. I have a lot of time.
You like that?
They have not been on though, I drive by it many times a day, they have not been on.
They were clearly remounted the day I spoke with Chris over for a couple and I think they were not.
Phil Coolbo just wanted us to vote on adding eleven days to the GC's substantial completion date frame. So June 13th to June 24th. This is to simply align the substantial completion certificate date with the contractual substantial completion date. So if I could get a motion on that, just to approve that.
So moved.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
This is June 23rd?
It is, it's the June 13th to the 24th.
Okay.
We're way past that.
We're in July though, isn't it?
But it's not July, no?
No, it was, it was just the substantial completion. So it was, it's just making sure it was in line because it was supposed to have its application.
Paperwork?
But it wasn't.
Okay.
We had a temporary C level rather than full C.
So just fixing the paperwork issue then?
Correct.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In that, we're almost, this list is getting thinner and thinner and we're looking at probably August for an opening date, you know, putting it off until we can have people come in to take a look at it and.
Are there fire trucks in that yet or is it?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Speaking of that, David, can we talk to Senator Commerford and Representative Carey and see where our North Hadley Hall Article 97 legislation is? Because once those fire trucks are out of there, we need the, the building out of there too, or gone.
One more, I'm like, I need to.
Alright, next.
I can say the library too, if you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let's, oh, yeah, they're looking at Labor Day, hopefully as like a movement date, substantial completion. And the next things will be going out to bid for solar. That's coming down the line, that's just to get the, the LEED certification guaranteed and get that $100,000 grant for having a LEED certification. And then, you know, kind of the library community has come together to get a good deal on landscaping materials from Wanzig Nursery and they're putting out to bid the installation of landscaping. But there will also be some community involvement in installing that landscaping. One other thing is just needing to coordinate with the senior center on some activities that still have to happen in that paved area, like they have to put curbs in and different things along those lines. So Jane, I don't know if you're willing to serve as a point person or I don't know if Bill or who's, but okay. That's about it.
Alright.
Great, they both look, buildings look good.
All around.
Alright, last, well, next to last, common victular license for Joy Bowl. Jennifer, do you want to?
Yes. So Joy Bowl is a poke restaurant that's opening up from the former Sweet Frog location. I'm asking you to take this up as an item for seeing because I had, wanted to hold approval when you were doing your first interview. So I did have that on the agenda. They have submitted paperwork, they're paying affiliate sector, the fire department and with the board help. So I would ask that you approve their application. There was a little bit of, should they come tonight or not? And, you know, I offered those both options, but they did not come.
So can I get a?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve a common victular license for Joy Bowl restaurants.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We will skip the administrative report, no offense, David, and also the liaison reports for tonight since it's been a long, long day. We've been at this since 11:30, so let's just go with announcements. Cultural Council, haiku and Hadley.
I put the whole announcement on there, I didn't expect y'all to read it, but the cultural council has, working with their poet laureate, has put haikus on the bike trail for people to see and they're going to look at moving around and putting them in other places in the town. And I thought it was just a good reach y'all have to share.
Yeah, it's, they're little blue signs along the bike path and they're kind of cool. They're all over the place with little different poems on them, so.
Thanks.
Alright, any other announcements?
I think.
No, I, the only one I had was a Mrs. Buddha that had passed away. And that's Mary Ziminski's mom, their mutual mom and her dad. So condolences to them and their families on their mother passing.
Any other announcements? I have, the next meeting we are scheduled for is August 5th, according to my calendar. Is that what everybody else has?
Here or Zoom?
Uh, Zoom, back to Zoom. So, um, at least.
We're going to Zoom for August and see what September brings.
Yeah, yeah, we'll reevaluate for September, but at least for August. This was a special circumstance with the interviews, it was very important position to try to do a Zoom call, so. That's all I have, David, do you have anything else?
No, I think we're, it's a good meeting, it's a good day for Hadley.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.